Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one M R S A section four zero three dash A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board's January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. The meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all of the exhibits that are being offered. Please notify the chair if you are unable to hear or see something. Please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or act on an app or action on an application. There is no public hearing scheduled for this evening. So the skip down to this far section. Because I can skip all of this. So after the planning board makes final decisions, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she may do so within thirty days. The city's ordinance and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department office located at nine one nine Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening and we welcome public participation. And with that, we can go down to the agenda, starting with meeting minutes from May third, two thousand twenty-three. It looks as though all members were present with the note of Oliver Jones, who is no longer serving on the board. And Todd, thank you. Did anyone have a chance to review meeting minutes? Have any questions, concerns, edits? Motion to approve? Perfect.
Second.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes, that's your microphone. Perfect. Next agenda item is we need to vote. All those that approve a motion. Excellent. Thank you. That's.
All of us.
All with the I do want to make a note that Tom Morgan, Chairman, is absent tonight and I will be stepping in for him. So work session, we're going to continue the discussion of conservation subdivision.
Okay, we are bringing back the topic that we had talked about, I think, kind of over the summer slash getting a fall about conservation subdivisions. Now that LD two thousand and three has finally been accomplished, great job, everyone, we can get back to some of the topics that we were talking about before that. And if you remember, we do currently have a cluster subdivision ordinance, which requires forty percent of the land be preserved for open space. And the new proposed ordinance, I will say, is suggesting sixty percent conserve for open space. Several of the other provisions still apply as far as how that open space is dedicated or who maintains the rights of that. What will I start with, I guess? So this, I did create a draft ordinance, thanks then, where we are talking about what conservation subdivision is essentially. So our, the purpose of this is to preserve natural areas, including but not limited to farmlands, wetlands, active trail systems, land which provides a buffer around a sensitive wildlife habitat or natural area, land which provides physical or visual access to a water body, land which is suitable for passive recreation, and land which abuts or joins an existing open space. The purpose is also to establish permanent public access to natural areas for residents, to support wildlife habitats and migration corridors, promote the naturalization of the landscape, and provide opportunities for community scale agricultural operations. Also meant to allow for the reclamation of land following deforestation, mineral extraction, brownfield or environmental cleanup, or the closure of industrial or commercial uses, and to provide options for housing development that support alternative development patterns, which are not restricted to any one zoning district. So it's kind of a multi-part purpose. I see it as preserve and then access, reclamation, and housing alternatives. Similar to the cluster subdivision ordinance, we're proposing that this will kind of sit on top of other zoning districts. It will still be held to the standards of an overlay zone as well as flood plain, shoreland, and subdivision. This is maybe some, some topic of discussion here that it still has to follow all the rules of the subdivision ordinance. Sorry, this is a typo. It's the conservation subdivision, not for well housing. What we had discussed before as far as space and bulk standards is that the maximum net residential is two dwelling units per acre. This really only affects the R M U and R R districts because in the residential development district, they're already allowed to go more dense than that. So it's sort of like an incentive to developers in the R M U and R R districts that allows them to build at a higher density than is currently allowed in those zones, but then requires that they preserve sixty percent of the total site to open space. Open space, agricultural space, recreational, something that is not privately held, basically. The minimum rear setback is ten feet. This is per residential parcel and the maximum height is still thirty-five feet, which is pretty much our standard for most of our residential districts. Buffering was a topic that we had talked about several times last fall and I put in here two different options. So the first option is what is currently in our cluster subdivision ordinance, but I have just changed these, the first line to say conservation subdivision. But essentially, it says it should be buffered from the street or road other than internal roads or from any abutting single-family dwelling by distance equal to two times the normal minimum setbacks required for the zone. So it's kind of a interesting take on the buffer because right now that means, you know, for the, there's a different setback in the rear versus the front. So it does require the cluster subdivision to be further setback from the front than from the rear, something to discuss. Or the option two would be to just put a number around the exterior of a conservation subdivision, whether that should be fifty feet or less or more. I don't really see the need for it to be more than fifty feet, which is our, is more than what the R M U and R R zones require for a single-family house is, those are thirty feet. I can pull up the table. Oh, it's in that one, actually. I think I put it in here. Yep, there you go. So for comparison, right now, both of our rural residential and rural mixed-use zones have a net density of one dwelling unit per two net acres. Minimum lot sizes, twenty thousand square feet is the minimum for individual septic system by the state. So again, we'd have talked about the opportunity for community septic here or requiring that they be attached to public sewer and water services. What we're talking about is buffering. So a front setback is twenty-five feet currently in these districts. If they make it a cluster subdivision, they have to be then fifty feet back from the front and thirty feet from the rear or side. If that makes sense? We had proposed ten feet for individual lots and fifty feet around the exterior, but I don't know, that's a topic for you guys to discuss as far as if there's a larger site and we're then splitting off forty percent of that for individual lots, how do you feel about anyone on the main road being able to see that development? I mean, it's just housing. It's nothing, you know, nefarious, but it's a little, it is more dense than what is currently in the neighborhoods surrounding it. So this is a draft ordinance. We're not, we didn't advertise for a public hearing, so it's, it's not ready for City Council yet. I'm thinking maybe we could get to that point for the next meeting and I will advertise it if we feel like we can come out of this meeting tonight feeling like we know where we want it to go. If not, we can just keep talking about it.
Thank you. Good job. Anyone have any questions, want to add anything?
One of the ordinances had, I don't know if it was Cumberland, certain roads, there was a, they increased the buffer like a hundred and fifty feet or something.
One of the other sample ordinances?
Yes.
Is that what it was? Yeah, that's possible. We could, we could increase it from, right now, we have proposed fifty feet in here, but is that necessary, I guess, is the question?
Well, it was just they had certain roads they listed for some reason. I don't know what the thinking was behind.
You're right, I did see that. I don't know what the thinking was. Like if it's a busier road, they want it further setback?
Our current ordinance lists like Hanson Ridge Road and part of that area as a, I forget the term it uses, but it requires larger setbacks, require larger street frontages. So our current ordinance in the R R zone has similar provision. Not necessarily saying we need to keep that, but I would say I wouldn't want to see it less than fifty foot on the perimeter and would welcome more because again, we're talking residential rural zones and we're allowing, proposed allowing two dwelling units per acre. So it went from one for two acres. Now it's going for two to one. So we proposed to alter, to switch it. So if we are allowing that density development in the rural zones, I, I would recommend we minimally keep it at the fifty foot for the perimeter ones. The internal lot line separations, Aaron's proposing, I think, zero. And those ones don't concern me as much as the, as the abundant ones.
And do they have to hook up the city sewer and water?
No.
We haven't set, we haven't put that in.
Because that would, nothing in the R R zone really, well, there's a few houses on Hanson's Ridge, but.
That's why they're half acre, because half acre is the state minimum for a septic
That's what our current standard is.
State law says.
It has to be.
Twenty thousand square feet for minimum lot size, but remember, we're talking about net density. So it's not just that it's two dwelling units on one acre. They could take one acre and put ten dwelling units on it as long as they have enough other acreage to offset that.
Oh, and so that's what scares me is so my dad has a perfect example for this property. There's two acres developable and there's ninety-eight acres undevelopable. And so he's able to take all that acreage that would otherwise be undevelopable instead of being able to only put one or two houses on it, now he's able to put sixteen.
Our current ordinance.
Sorry, four because of the half acre.
Our current ordinance has definition of open space that limits the amount of steep slope, limits the amount of wetlands in the open space. So those would still apply if we're calling it open space. So I don't know why your, your folks' lot is ninety-eight percent undevelopable, but if it's because of steep slopes or wetlands, that would be taken in consideration for that calculation.
It's because you'd have to cross the wetlands to get to the developable land and you wouldn't otherwise be able to, but he'd be able to count it towards open space, maybe not the wetland piece, but the rest of it.
Right, so from our cluster subdivision, I copied in the same definition. It's that not more than twenty percent of the required open space may be wetland or slopes greater than fifteen percent. So.
Yep.
A portion of it can count if we keep the same definition.
Yep. Yeah, that's all I want to make sure is we're not like making a undevelopable lot, you know, by putting a ton of houses on it when otherwise it wouldn't support it.
So I'm just going to go back to the state minimum lot size. Aaron mentioned a scenario where we're talking density, not lot size, but under state law, if they are calling these individual lots, they have to be twenty thousand square feet.
They have to be.
So if they're doing it as a condo complex or some other type of development where they don't create individual lots, then the density will come into play where they could put more than that on a small section of land and have more open space. But if we are actually creating lots where public sewer is not available, they would have to be twenty thousand square foot lots under state law.
Ask a quick question. Just hit me over the head if I'm going off the range here, but if you have more people using the septic tank, I mean, does, you need more space around it? Does it need to be bigger or what's?
Septic fields are designed on number of bedrooms being serviced by that system. The, the more bedrooms, the larger the tank, the larger the field. There are minimum setbacks from, from septic components to structures, septic components to wells. If we're on a private well and say it's a community well, it's a larger setback than if it's individual private wells. So, so yes, putting a bunch of septic systems close to each other or even one large one does have implications.
So do you need more than twenty thousand square feet then?
So in the case of a twenty thousand square foot minimum lot, state law would say that the lots have to be twenty thousand square feet, but it doesn't mean that the septic actually has to be on that twenty thousand square feet. We could require a twenty thousand square foot lot and then put a large community septic in the back forty and pump it to it or something. So just because we need a twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size doesn't mean the septic is, has to be on that. We, we can do a community one elsewhere on the property.
There's a subdivision in Elliott that, that.
One of their research things you had, that's what one of the developers did. He put in a septic, huge septic field or tank.
Like we have several manufactured housing parks in Sanford and most of them have community septics. One of the older ones, almost every one has its own septic or some of them share one septic for two houses side by side. But if possible, the community septic system is a better alternative than a bunch of little ones side by side.
And we had talked about if it was community septic, that would be, have to be spelled out in an HOA agreement, similar to how we do private ways. Not all that language is in here yet, but that was what we had discussed last time.
For me, my only concern is increasing the development in rural residential. The comprehensive plan is pretty clear that you're supposed to direct development away from. And so if this allows developers to shorten the development road, which drastically increases the cost of the development, it may make more properties much more developable and, you know, a higher likelihood of the properties being developed in the first place where they wouldn't otherwise.
Right.
Maybe one house or two houses or, you know, you've seen it, I mean, we've seen it where the developer only develops the road frontage because the, you know, cost of putting a road in is too great. But now you're able to put six, seven houses in on a couple hundred foot road.
So in the R R and the R M U zones right now, we say for any lot that's ten acres or more, they have to do a cluster subdivision or follow a certain other set of conditions. But we could keep that provision in as well. So it's, it only applies if, it has to be a certain size to begin with. And then, I mean, we were talking about the fact that what we want to do is, is to conserve these larger areas, either farmland or recreational space, parks, things that will actually uphold the rural character, more so than just single-family homes spread out and taking up space. This is more like condensing them to a smaller area in order to preserve the land area.
Yeah.
We haven't had much success with our cluster subdivisions in that the forty percent open space we're crying right now are generally kind of in the back of the subdivision called the S A C's, not really publicly accessible. No one takes ownership of them.
Yeah.
And ten acres is not a, a lot, a super large area to then, it's really only four acres or, yeah, four acres at this point because they're allowed to develop sixty percent of the site.
Yeah, because I mean, that's, because we're trying to conserve the farmland, but if no one can actually use it for farming, then we'd defeat the whole purpose or similar. Even, even forestry management, if it's open space and it can't be used for forestry management.
No, we're saying it can be.
Yeah.
Management and farm, how do you mean they couldn't use it as farmland?
If it's open to everyone, it's just going to be a fight over who gets to farm it.
Well, some of your research, you had that agri-hood.
Yep.
Which was interesting because some of the HOAs, they had to pay into the farm.
Yeah.
Then again, it depends on what you're farming. If you got a hog farm, you don't want any neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we didn't really flush out how we would manage the open space, right? Like it's one option if, if it's large enough and the Three Rivers Land Trust is interested and they approach them, they're like, yeah, we'll take that and we'll make it a park. That's kind of an easy option. It's already on the table right now, but they aren't really jumping at that, at the cluster subdivisions because they're kind of too sporadic and too small to be a real land trust park.
Yeah.
So if we wanted to be a farmland, I mean, we could come up with rules or regulations that they have to have that set up ahead of time. They have to have a five oh one C three. It has to be dedicated before we approve the subdivision plan.
Yeah.
How the open space will be used.
Because I look at like, you know, McDougall's with the farmland forever and it'd be awesome if they're able to put, you know, if a similar setup, they can put a few houses in in this cluster subdivision, but then put the rest in farmland forever and continue to be able to farm it.
Right.
You know, because it's very difficult to afford farmland. And so if someone's able to do that, there could be a higher propensity that they continue to use it as farmland. I mean, that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I think one of the concerns that we were hoping to address with this on a larger scale, which is happening nationwide, is that farmers are looking to retire and their children are not into, are not, have not taken on the family business, have moved away and are in a different business sector entirely. And so their only option at that point is either to sell to a larger farmer conglomerate or to sell to a developer for a subdivision.
Yeah.
So the goal here would be instead to maintain some of that farmland, but make it an affordable option where they are able to offset their costs with a smaller portion of the farm being dedicated to development.
Um, is there going to be a minimum number of houses? Because like, would I be able to take two houses and call it a cluster subdivision?
Our cluster subdivision right now, I think, is five or six is the minimum. It needs to have a minimum.
So we'd keep it the same or?
It's up to you guys. Yeah, we can keep it the same.
So this, this is a radical discussion. It's why we brought it back as a workshop. You guys might feel comfortable today. You might want to do ten more of these. You might never feel comfortable with this. This is, this is a radical thought and we've had lots of, with LD two thousand and three, there's a lot of stuff that we, we just discussed. A lot of it wasn't options. It was state mandated. This is not anything to do with LD two thousand and three. This is just, we've had some developers approach us, gave us the idea to discuss this. Don't, don't feel pressured. We have to make a decision today. I, I think that we do have to come up with some of these, these things we're discussing today of, okay, how, how do we want them to deal with the open space? How, how much of the open space has to be on the perimeter? What do we want for allowed uses in the open space? These, these are all very, very valid points. We, we are talking the rural zones and we are talking more dense development. So I, I want these discussions. I, I want you guys to voice your concerns and, and maybe even get some public input on, on what the public wants. This is, this is thinking outside of the box and it's thinking outside of the box not being mandated by the state, which is a big difference from the last two or three months of discussions we've had here. Because a lot of those things, we didn't have an option in. So we, we kind of just went through the process. Don't feel rushed on this one. If, if we're comfortable, we'll move it forward. If we're not, we can, we can talk about this till the cows come home.
The best way to save farmland is to sell development rights.
Yeah.
But you got to get people that want to do.
Yes.
It's on.
Bring it closer to your face. Put the green lights on?
Yeah.
Testing.
There you go.
Little bit better.
Okay, the best way to save farmland is to sell the development rights, is that you said?
Yeah.
Yes.
What's that process look like usually?
Uh, it took us a number of years because the state and the feds kept changing what we were supposed to, hoops we were supposed to jump through. We, Main Farmland Trust holds the easement and they come up every year to make sure we haven't put in a golf course or campground. We have a six acre site where we can pretty much do anything we want, but the rest of it has to stay the way it is. We can still log it and farm it. Plus it reduces your taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So would you say most farms, at least in Sanford, have done that process?
Reeveards has, Noon's has, we have, I'm not sure who else has.
So those are the bigger farms.
I'm still uneasy with this because it sounds, you know, nice and friendly and conservation easement, but I still worry that it just makes it easier for lots to be developed in the first place, just leading to more development. And that's con, that's contrary to the comprehensive plan. I still, I'd have to go back and look at the comprehensive plan, but I'm pretty sure it spells out the density for the rural zones in it. And it may talk about doing some sort of, you know, uh, cluster subdivision, so to speak, but I'm not sure if it's, yeah, I'd have to go back and look at what it spells out for density.
I can't remember if they say exactly what the density is meant to be or not.
I think there's guidelines. I don't think it's spelled out exactly. It was pretty, I'm not general, but it wasn't very specific either.
And let's, let's just remember that we are actively starred in the process of comprehensive plan update as well.
Right.
So while we won't get a hundred percent new comprehensive plan, there will be, it's, it's twenty years old, so there will be some updates to it that will be forthcoming as well.
I do have a quick question in regards to a forty thousand square foot minimum lot size that would require city water and sewer, correct?
No.
No?
If we went to a forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, that would not require either because the minimum lot size for septic is twenty thousand. So anything, anything over twenty thousand could potentially hold a septic system if public sewer is not available. State law, local ordinance requires you to connect to public sewer if it's available.
So if it's not available, is Sanford able to like sustain having? Because if you think about the population increase, can Sanford sustain that?
Well, I've said this a few times over the last year as well. Sanford became a city about a decade ago. We've been slowly making very small baby steps towards the, the big picture of becoming a city. While I think even the new comp plan is going to say that our rural areas, we need to do something to preserve the rural character of the neighborhoods. Cities evolve into more dense areas. That's, that's kind of what a city is. So it's, it's hard for all of us people that have been here a long time to, to wrap our heads around what that all means. But I'm not saying we need to allow a house every twenty feet in the R R zones because then it would obviously no longer be the R R zone. But I think with the updated comprehensive plan and future discussions like we're having tonight, that the density of one unit for two acres is probably slightly antiquated and that number needs to be revised somehow. I'm not, I'm not saying we have to go to two per one acre, but. I'm not, I'm not saying we have to go to two per one acre, but as as.
One per five.
That's why I was thinking two.
One per five acres?
Yeah. And I'm shooting myself in the foot by saying that, but I don't know. I think in certain areas, that's what you want.
So and and we can be specific. I mentioned that the ordinance talks about Hanson Dredge Road and 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 area on it. That is our our farm country, I'll call it. So they put some preservations in the existing ordinance to make it so you need more frontages and more setbacks to to try to help preserve that. So we potentially could say you could do a conservation area subdivision in specific portions of the zones, not blanket all of the zone. Like maybe do it in more of the woodsy country than the than the fieldsy country or or vice versa, depending on which which way you guys are looking for it. But this this again is, this is new. This is, we we can draft it. Aaron can draft it, however you guys want it to be drafted.
Go Aaron.
She she's, she kind of drafted this so far out of thin air. So I mean, it's expected that we're going to have to make tweaks to it. And I and I hope we make tweaks to it because I want this to be you guys' ordinance, not mine or Aaron's or anybody's in particular. I want it to be the 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 community ordinance. I want the community to embrace this, not not hate it. If if nobody's going to want this, then then it won't pass to city council. So we have to put thought into this one.
Another question would be if there's something specific that you'd like to see, like if you want to see an example of what a neighborhood looks like under our current RR zone, under our cluster subdivision, under what this could.
You had done some pictures last time, right?
I have some, but I don't know if they are, I don't know if they're useful or not because so like this is the generic graphic I did not make of a conventional subdivision versus a conservation subdivision. Same number of houses. It's just that you get to preserve that much green space.
So with that and for conversation's sake, I want to discuss like the benefits, pros and cons, if you will, of the front, the minimum street frontage and the minimum front setback, the minimum side setback. So what is the benefit of of zero feet, just for the sake of conversation, versus like ten feet, et cetera? What?
Just provides flexibility for a developer. So I mean, it's it's, we're not allowing multifamily in these areas, so they do have to be detached. If they were to be at three feet of separation, they'd have to have firewalls of a certain rating. So it's unlikely that they are going to build that way. I mean, the urban zone right now has zero restrictions similar to this, but you don't see the houses being built right on top of each other. We do allow multifamily in the urban zone, so that would be a difference.
Just to clarify, when you say multifamily, the state has forced our hand that we have to allow duplexes in the zone.
Yes, but we still have the net density regulation. So in order for them to have two dwelling units, which is what's allowed in the RR zone, they still have to have four acres.
Currently.
Currently. So it's it sort of allows it, yes.
So this picture is a good description to help answer your question. The bottom picture is the the one with minimal setbacks. So it allows you to cluster them, truly cluster them. I mean, our current cluster ordinance allows much smaller lots, but it still requires frontage, still requires setbacks. So in the case of potentially trying to promote the the keeping of the open space, the fields, the the tree, tree lines, you could you can put a bunch of stuff like literally on top of each other to then be able to preserve more of the green space. It's 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 an urban feel in a in a rural area. But again, you you're creating a pocket village of the urban fail field, surrounded by a buffer so that all the butters don't have to feel like they live in downtown Sanford. But if the people buy in or rent in or whatever one of these places, if they they're okay living in the very urban field, you you create enough buffer to separate it from the rest of the people that don't feel comfortable living in the urban, maybe that's an option. The truth of the matter is, is all of the bills coming out of the house these days and all the discussion you hear is, we need more housing. Whether whether we want to admit it or not, we we need more housing. This is, this is a potential way to provide more housing with still protecting some of the rural character. And again, all of these numbers are up for debate. I'm not, I'm not suggesting any number tonight personally.
Those are so unappealing to me personally.
It's not about you. I hate to say that on the record, but you're supposed to be representing the key's interests. So I know your default is always to think of your own personal property, but.
No, I'm not thinking about my own personal property. I'm thinking about my own personal preference and if I'm moving to the country.
Same thing.
That's not the country.
I just think it looks, it's starting to look a little bit more like Maryland. I think that's that's what I'm worried about. You know, I don't want to reach out my window and scratch my neighbor's back. I mean, I want. Do we need maybe a little more space around the houses? I don't know. I just, to me, it doesn't look attractive to have them that close together.
So we had a similar conversation last meeting about how the market takes care of these issues. Just because you don't want to live in a certain kind of house doesn't mean that someone else doesn't want to live in that kind of house, whether that's a ten story apartment building, a studio, or a farmhouse with six bedrooms. I don't want to live in a house with six bedrooms. That's a lot of room to clean.
Developers like to build them. Developers want to build them closer together because they can make more money.
If somebody builds one and nobody wants to move into it.
Never happen again.
It'll never happen again.
I mean, let the market take care of itself. That's the intent. People will do research before they just take this land and do this and put all clusters of houses and nobody moves in. That would be a disaster and that typically doesn't happen. And again, and I think you're right about it's not so much how I would want personally to live, but it's that how would people view this and how does it meet our our goals of preserving the open space and yet being able to do some density in a in a particular part of the area? In the comparison, I mean, there could be some derivative different than what we see in those two drawings, but they're exaggerated examples of spreading houses out with road meandering around versus a lane in to density. And some of these pictures I've seen here make sense for a lot of people that they do like to have the, they're okay with the close proximity and yet they still have that farmland. And I will, my, when I see that density as compared to Hanson Ridge, where on one side you go where there's a house and it's open field and then there's another house, very pretty houses. It's all open with a house and a house spread out as opposed to what if those were a small community and the rest of it was open field? That's almost the difference of what I am imagining what you're asking for for us.
That is the difference, yes.
What's made me think about this is a lot for sale on Hanson Ridge Road, on the corner of Oak Street and Hanson Ridge.
Yeah.
I drive by it every day and every day I drive by it. I shake my head saying, somebody's going to buy this and make this a subdivision.
Yeah.
If we can create an ordinance to make it so that that still looks like a field, but yet somebody can make a little bit of money and and make it doable and build a few houses kind of in the back side of it where you can't see it, but all you still see is the farm, I'd much rather see that than to see a piano key, six lot subdivision along Hanson Ridge Road. That that would make me cry every day going home.
That's twenty acres, isn't it?
Well, I think part of it is also preserving what Sanford, what Sanford is, so you don't want to overkill Sanford with a whole bunch of houses, whether they're clustered, et cetera. And that's something to keep in mind. So I'm looking at this picture and personally, I agree with Jace. I I don't think that that is what Sanford needs. Now, if we talk about similar to what you were just talking about, it's something to think about, like when you're envisioning what that aesthetic would look like. What were you going to say?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Oh, yeah. So that's something to keep in the back of your minds is what Sanford, like preserving what we are without getting too overwhelmed or embalmed, which is why I asked the question earlier is can Sanford like sustain that population? If we were to basically have a house on top of a house on top of a house? And I don't think so in my personal opinion and I don't want it to, even if it could. The end.
And a and a lot to do with services. So we we do have to take into account if if we have a subdevelopment out in the South Forty and now we have a bu- a whole bus worth of kids that needs to get onto the station. Now we have an extra bus route and the trash trucks have to go twenty miles to pick up the trash instead of a half a mile. So a lot of that, I mean, we we are still promoting infill in our urban zone. All of our ordinance are are very promotion of do it in our core because that's that's where we're set up to do it. And I think with the comp plan and ordinance changes in the future, we're going to even promote infill more because really that's where we want development. So this this can't and shouldn't be construed as we're trying to promote development out in the rural zones. It's trying to promote smart growth in the rural zones. So I'm not saying that really I want it to allow in the end any more density than what's required today. I want it to be smart growth instead of sprawl is what my goal of this is.
You know, the market will support pretty much anything you want to do right now. If you want to build, the market will support it.
You could build in a swamp and someone's going to buy it.
I think it's really up to the community to set the standard for what they want, they want it to look like. I think it is okay for people to say, we want our community to have space. We want it to have open space. Not just leave it up to the market. I think we can, we can make those rules. I mean, I think it is reasonable. I think it's fair.
So Aaron, in a lot of our other ordinance changes you've done over the last six months, year, you've you've created some good diagrams and and I think a picture speaks a thousand words. So I think for our next discussion, maybe we can take a lot that everybody's familiar with and kind of just not obviously design a subdivision, but kind of just design a subdivision quickly. I'm a, I'm a visual person. I I much prefer to look at a a plan. I'm a plans person. I think it will help everybody kind of wrap their head around what what this type of density and this type of open space requirements with certain buffers might look like. I was less scared with some of your other pictures you gave for us. So I I think pictures help.
Okay, diagrams.
Do that twenty acres on Hanson's Ridge.
I can do that.
We can do that. Good example.
For sale right now?
Because I mean, if somebody buys that.
Right. It'll be, it'll be what someone could develop if they split it all out into the minimum acreage, what they could do for a cluster subdivision and what they could do under what we've kind of drafted as far as the conservation. Does that sound reasonable?
I think that'll help us all wrap our heads around this.
Yep.
This is going to come back to us, right?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah. And we need to have a public hearing on it and all that. So I think maybe we're not ready for the public hearing at the next meeting. I can't, yeah, so we'll we'll come back for another discussion.
Yeah.
Is there any other guidance you want to give Aaron on any potential changes to what she has thus far or?
I like the sixty sixty percent open space, as long as it's, the houses are all clustered in one area where the sixty percent is surrounding it.
Now, when we calculate that sixty percent, would that include or exclude wetlands or?
Only a portion.
It could only include a portion thereof. So let's let's use, let's say it's a hundred acre lot, fifty acre of its wetlands. You could only take five acres of those wetlands and put it towards your minimum required sixty percent of the land. So you could, you could use wetlands as open space, but only a small percentage of that would count towards that required sixty percent. Only five percent of it could could account for the sixty percent you required, which would force more of the good land to also be open space.
Why?
Wasn't there an incline in there too?
It's steep slopes and and wetlands, yeah.
Slopes greater than fifteen percent.
And again, that's a topic for debate. That's.
I'm, I'm, I guess I'm asking why because if it can't be developed or you can't do anything with it anyways, why is it counting towards anything?
It's really not counting towards anything.
Well, if you, if you can account for that space.
It should be left natural.
You can account for five percent of it.
It has to be left natural.
No, I want it to be left natural, but then I would want additional space because I don't want that to take a. Am I thinking about it backwards?
I think it is written the way that you want it to be written.
Okay.
So if there's a hundred acres, you need to have, for our current cluster subdivision, forty acres would need to be conserved. If fifty acres of that hundred acres is wetlands, then there's all, there's like no space for them to develop that parcel, basically. Because they have to take, you only, only twenty percent of the required area counts. The rest is wetlands and they have to have forty full acres still.
Okay.
You know, so it's.
I was thinking about that.
It was a lot of math. I'd have to really write that out, but.
And again, just just numbers tonight.
Perfect. Okay, good. Now that makes me happy. Anyone else have anything to add? No.
Question, Todd?
Good discussion. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead. The next, oh, sorry. Can we move on to a discussion item number two? Is that okay with everyone? All right, excellent. A discussion of potential design review updates.
So I'll I'll preface this. So this change tonight is a fairly minor change. This was a request of Economic Development Department. So it's, it's, it's really just a small verbiage change to make it so that a few more signs specifically might be able to come under staff level review. At some point, I think we need to have a much more comprehensive discussion on the design review ordinance. I don't think we have the time right now to do that full comprehensive review with the comp plan and everything else on our tables, more likely Aaron's tables. But tonight's is a fairly simple, you're going to look at it and say, what what are we doing? It's it's really minor. But Economic Development feels this is an important change that would would help businesses navigate the permit process without any harm to the district.
That is essentially it. I think down the line, one change that we would also like to make for the design review districts in the, in the ordinance is that it it jumps back and forth between Springvale and downtown. It's very difficult to understand even from a staff point of view, let alone from an applicant point of view. And so given the fact that we may be want to come up with changes following the comprehensive plan, would you all be comfortable with us kind of reorganizing that chapter just with all the provisions that are in there right now, but making it more legible?
I think that's a wonderful idea, serving on the design review committee. We've had applicants come forward and with signs and et cetera, and they just kind of, we pass them through with flying colors because there's really nothing else except to make sure they're biding by lighting, backlighting, et cetera, but they're already doing that. So, yeah, I think that's a fantastic idea, especially if it's going to streamline the process and minimize confusion.
I think it will minimize confusion when we get to the point of discussing any changes. Because right now it's hard to know what's what's happening as it stands.
When I was on the zoning board, didn't we do a sign ordinance like ten or fifteen years ago?
Oh, surely.
So so our sign ordinance was updated probably seven years or so ago.
Maybe.
Was it that long ago?
So this is different. This is, this is part of the.
Time flies when you're having fun.
This is part of the design review ordinance. So the sign ordinance basically dictates size and stuff like that. In the design review ordinance for specific sections of town, it then says that in Springvale, they they can't be backlit. They have to be frontlit. They, it, so again, the design of your ordinance as a whole, I I think needs quite a bit of work that will come after the comp plan for both time and and for consistency with the comp plan. This is, this is a minor change. So I guess that this is also a work session that we didn't hold the public here and yet. I wanted to get you guys' opinion on whether you're comfortable doing a minor change, if you want to wait to do them all together. And if you are comfortable doing a minor change, is this something that you think is is feasible?
Are you just proposing the sign change right now or is it just the overall layout of the district? Because I saw that in the notes too.
So tonight's conversation is is just a paragraph on what staff is allowed to to approve without sending to design review. Previously, in a nutshell, previously, it said. Previously, in a nutshell, previously, it said that updates to corporate signage, Dunkin' Donuts wants new signs, and they, they changed the look of the coffee cup. I could have okayed that before. Now, it's saying that not only slight updates to corporate signage, but you went to design review already, and you had a sign that was approved, and now you want to change the logo, or you want to change the, the color, a shade off, or minor changes to that sign, even if it's not a Dunkin' Donuts corporate sign. Now, staff would be allowed to approve that, potentially, without going to design review. If staff still felt it was a big enough change to warrant you guys' review, then we would still kick it to design review, but it changes the...
Who's staff?
It's listed as planning director, currently.
And what, from what I read, if you have any concerns about it, you can always send it to the design review.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, really, it's just gives a little bit more flexibility in going just from a corporate sign, minor change, to an any sign, minor change, that had already received approval. So, it can't be a new sign, it has to be one that had already gone before design review. Now, they're looking to do a minor change to it.
Yes, for me, looking at that from design review, I mean, for me, it was never about the minor changes, it was about how the sign was presented.
Right.
If you were gonna reframe the sign, or relocate it, or change the overall presentation of it, that would be, I think, a design issue, but not...
And we've, we've had this discussion over the years of trying to right-size that staff-level review. The design review district's difficult, because it's very, very, in some cases, they're looking for something very specific, but in some cases, it's not. So, it's, it's a little bit subjective, but yet, not. So, it's, this is just a very small, minor, minor change to try to make it so that everybody looking to replace a sign doesn't have to go before the board. Again, I, I think the ordinance needs revisions, but I don't think now's the time for that.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it. I think it makes sense, it also saves the applicant time and design review committee time, because how many times have we sat there in two seconds, you know? It's just not, not worthy for those little, those little changes that come through. Yeah, I think that sounds great.
Okay, we can schedule this one for a public hearing for next available.
Yep, that sounds good. If I manage it, I might reorganize things, too, but we'll see. How much coffee I can consume between now and then.
With all that extra time you have.
Yeah, exactly, right, yep.
Excellent discussion tonight, everyone. I think that worked out really well. Moving on to other business, item number one is nomination and appointment of Bridget Salat, Solantry, Solentra? Sorry if I am butchering your name, I appreciate, sorry, to design review committee.
So, city council forms a subcommittee that does the appointment nominations. Bridget had applied for a few different boards, and the city council thought that she would be a very good fit for the design review committee, so they are recommending that you guys appoint her as a member of the design review committee.
I, can I approve nomination?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I didn't know if I could do it. Sorry. Excellent, all those in favor? Welcome aboard to the design review committee.
Sign.
What?
Sign.
Design, what did I say?
Zoning.
Did I say zoning? Design review committee, my apologies, zoning on my brain. And then, item number two under new business is planning director's report.
So, last night, city council had the second reading on the first phase of our LD 2003 revisions, so the single-family residential to RD zone, the accessory dwelling unit, and the updates to the table of land uses, those are now ordinance, those, those are now in effect as of this morning. We took the second round of LD 2003 amendments, which was the affordable housing density bonus to subcommittee, last subcommittee meeting, so we will start that process through the city council, starting at the next city council meeting. So, it'll be about another month before those rounds are done. Poll in the state, Sanford, although we didn't quite make the January 1st deadline, we are far ahead of most other communities, so job well done to everybody involved. That was a slightly tedious task. I think Erin did a great job with the ordinances, I think you guys did a great job with the discussion. City council actually had some pretty good discussion on it as well. We brought it to the city council for actually three meetings, two subcommittee meetings. It was, it was well, well discussed, and I think we ended up with a decent result.
That's great, good job, Erin, good job, everyone. That's good news.
We have received a few applications for projects coming in, so we do have a, we do have a project on the agenda for next meeting. We, we met today to discuss an RFP that Erin had posted for a part of the comprehensive plan, so the comprehensive plan is now officially underway. We've gotta start having discussions about forming the steering committee and getting some public input, and that's when it's gonna get exciting, and when the public's gonna get involved, which is a good, good step, so. We're, after discussing comprehensive plan updates now for over a decade, where we are officially 100% there at this point, also exciting.
Very exciting.
We do have a couple larger projects that are in the backgrounds that we have not received applications for, so I, I do think we're gonna have a couple bigger projects that are gonna be, I'm gonna say, some lively conversation, more than likely. So, keep that in the back of your mind, that we're, we might have a few late nights, and we might have a few projects come through that need multiple meetings.
Not a problem, right? No problems there?
We, we might even request to do a site visit on one or both of them. So, we, we do have some, some interesting projects coming forward, I think.
That's exciting.
Just to put that in the back of your calendar. We've been lucky and had some early evenings, but I think this summer, we're gonna, we're gonna have some, some bigger projects coming forward.
That's great. Thank you.
Any movement on mineral extraction?
So, we, we had a joint workshop with the city council and the industry about two and a half months ago. At that workshop, the industry was tasked with giving us comments, or they even said they would prepare their own draft ordinance for us, and they were supposed to get that to Erin by the beginning of the year. I have not received that document, I have not received a word from the industry. So, at some point, the city council will have another workshop, and, and if we have something from the industry, we'll, we'll incorporate it, if not, we will continue our discussion as previously, as previously written.
Is there an actual ending date to this process? I mean, is it open-ended?
The council said their goal was to have them give us the document by the beginning of the year, and then give Erin a period of time to, to incorporate those thoughts into all of our paperwork. So, the thought process was by end of January, beginning of February, we would have the next workshop, which would then correlate into the two city council meetings required. The city council has not discussed that. I'm gonna bring it up at the next round of subcommittee meetings, which is the second Tuesday of every month, just to see if they want to proceed with, with our documents as written, or how they want to address the fact that we did not get the documents as requested.
Pass it as written.
Oh, boy.
And that's all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is communications. Back to you, Jean. Was that it?
Really, really nothing new. We did have some ordinance amendments last night. As soon as we get E-code to update those, we'll, we'll let you know. So, in the meanwhile, the ordinances, even the one we printed for our new member today, those are, those are outdated already, so as you read through it, just, I didn't, I didn't print you the updates that were just approved last night, but we'll get those to you as well. Just, just remember that as of, as of this morning, the ordinances are outdated as, as printed. We'll, we'll get you clean copies as soon as we can.
Anyone else have anything to add for communications? Motion to adjourn meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? I see 10 hands. Excellent. Congratulations, Bridget. You're not Bridget.
Bridget's not here.
Oh, you looked at me like, I, okay, my apologies. Well, if you're listening, Bridget, congratulations.
She's a friend of mine.
Oh! And thank you, everyone, for your participation and discussions.